Reports from Commissioners, Raton Water Works.
No report, no meeting.
Raton Public Service, Mr. Jacomo.
No report, a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, 5:30.
Senior Center Board, Mr. Chavez.
Yes, I attended the Senior Center Board meeting today at noon today and we discussed updates on the absorption of the wagon mound in Mora Senior Centers and the Simroon Senior Center problems, discussed and approved July finances, everything's running smooth.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Schuster.
The Planning and Zoning Commission met on July 20th at 7:00 PM. There was no new business and no old business. The next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 19th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. And I believe they hold that in the commission room over there.
Okay.
Generally. Moving on to the Housing Authority. They met on August 15th, 2017 at noon and there was no particular new business. They are finishing up concrete repairs that are ongoing through this month. There are three units with new cabinets installed and a total of 14 units will eventually have new cabinets. Their next meeting will be the third Tuesday, third Tuesday out of the month, I believe it is.
All right, thank you. ETZ Zoning Commission, myself, we have not met. Library Advisory Board, Commissioner Jacomo.
No report, no meeting this month.
Okay, thank you. Financial Advisory Board, Commissioner Chavez.
Yes, the Financial Advisory Board met on the 17th. We reviewed and approved the financial reports to be presented to this commission tonight.
All righty, thank you. Well, I'll move on to the business items of the meeting. Item number 7A, approval of the August 8th regular commission meeting minutes. They are in your package, you should have had time to review.
Mayor Pro-Tam, there were a few minor mistakes, a couple of typos, and it's all been corrected. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
No second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as corrected. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Raton Chamber Fiscal Year 16 Year End Report. OD.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I believe all of you all have had a copy of this report in your packet. That's the report you're due for year end. It's pretty straightforward, but I'll be happy to take any questions that you all have and hopefully I can answer those.
Any questions for Ms. Burks?
No questions, my name is...
Last night at the meeting you mentioned you're having difficulty maintaining supervisory key holders, so I think that's something that we will discuss with Mr. Berry and possibly arrange a meeting with you so that we can get that discussed in full, so that that building can maintain secured and volunteers can...
Absolutely.
...can continue to work successfully.
Security is a big issue. We try to have a supervisor as well as volunteers. There's never one person there by themselves. There are transients, there are security issues, and so we always try to have two people, but it's been quite the struggle, especially the first part of August. There were a lot of people gone. So we really want the building to be secure, but we also don't want to leave people there feeling vulnerable. So that is something that we do need to discuss and work through.
And then the other thing at your meeting last night that I thought was of highlight was that, and I believe that you're aware of this, Mr. Berry, I think, and you've got a plan, I believe, on the drainage issue because of all the rain, there's been some drainage issues.
Mayor Schuster and Commission and Ms. Burks, I, we've been down to look at the building and now that we're getting rain, we have rain coming in the visitor center from a couple of different places. So one of those is a section of the roof where there really are two different sections of the building and there's some differential movement or differential settlements in the buildings. And so we do have a contractor in town currently, it's Archletic Construction, who works for New Mexico Self Insurers, and they are looking at buildings that are actively leaking. And so what we've seen is we've had issues at the library, senior center, visitor center, convention center primarily, and so they're focusing on those because of the urgent nature of those buildings. And so we talked about the, they came in yesterday and we talked about the needs at that building. And then also we have on the patio area, an aluminum storefront area or metal wall frame area, and we have leakage coming in through the panes on that. So I think that's kind of a simple matter of sealing that area, but the contractor for self insurers is in town and they're looking at those four buildings. I don't know where they were at today and it was a fairly busy day, but we've gone over in detail with them what the needs are and they should be taking action on those buildings where we have active issues going from leaking roofs or, in this case, leaking walls. So we should see them around in the next few days if they haven't been down there.
One other item we are going to need to meet with the city and with those in charge of the convention center. We are now getting leads in for groups that we want to book and so we're going to need to put a process in place, be sure everybody's on board. And so we want to meet and get that process ironed out before we really pitch it to these groups and get them booked and figure out how that's going to flow. So we'll be doing that here this next week or so.
Great, thank you. In regards to your expenses, I understand you guys now have about 130 businesses?
Yes.
Registered, great.
Yes, and we actually have two more sign up this week and we've got meetings with three next week. So as we promote more, and you'll be hearing us, we now are going to have a show on the radio, as you see more and more promotion, we anticipate more businesses coming on and we'll be starting sales for the Raton Visitors Guide for next year here pretty quick. And that tends to increase those tremendously.
Great, great. Any other questions?
Mayor Pro-Tam and Commissioner, I'll just ask, D., how is the visitors' traffic through there looking this summer? We've seen a lot of people in town, just wondering if you've seen a lot of people coming in for information?
We have seen a lot of people, a lot, we have given away a lot of information. We've had to call and ask to be restocked from various locations. The businesses here in town, you'll see our posts on Facebook, were constantly asking for more, you know, paraphernalia from them that we can hand out because we go through it so quickly. Next month after Gate City, we'll bring you a full report on how many people have come through, where they're coming from, what we've seen, what they've asked for. One of those things is actually on your agenda, an item that has been requested a lot, which is postcards and weather stickers or weatherproof stickers for RVs. The state is no longer producing those state stickers and we have the opportunity to produce them and people ask for them constantly. They want the New Mexico stickers like they're a little badge of honor that they earn as they go through the states. And so there are a couple of those little things that we are addressing and trying to provide, and those will go and welcome back soon.
Cool. Great. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve their statement of revenue and expenses.
I'll move to approve that.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, thank you, D. Item C, deliberate and act on an event, Raton Homecoming Parade Road closures. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Pro-Tam and Commission, in your packet you have a form and we really met with the group from the high school yesterday and worked out some last minute details to ensure safety of the homecoming parade. And so in attendance at the meeting were representatives of Raton Police Department, Raton Fire Department, Raton Public Works. And so we talk about if there was some kind of emergency in an event where we have, you know, the public gathering, to make sure we can have the appropriate response and the appropriate safety measures in place. And with the homecoming parade, you have parents dropping off children that want to be in the parade and we want to make sure that that is handled correctly. So the important element of this is that we will line up on First Street as normal and the parade will go through the downtown portion of First Street as we've done in the past few years. But the Raton Police Department will work with Raton Public Schools about having an organizational meeting for the entrance and it will mostly cover that safety aspect of that. So that's what we discussed yesterday. Our staff has signed off on that. We're ready to recommend approval of that event and the street closures to the City Commission.
This will be on First Street?
That's correct, Commissioner, it'll be on First Street. And I think, you know, in some years past, we had an event on Second Street. It is much more difficult to close all of the avenues or the potential points of access on South Second Street than it is on First Street. And so I think we all agree that First Street is a much safer option and that's the primary goal, is the safety of the public and the participants in the parade.
Make a motion to approve the High School Student Council's 207th Council Homecoming Parade.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the event. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate and act on an event, First Street Market 5K Run Fun Run Walk. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Pro-Tam and Commission, this is an event that was held last year and it is organized by the organizers of the First Street Market. They have had now for multiple years a farmer's market on First Street, which has grown over the years as far as vendors and people attending to, you know, looking to purchase things at the farmer's market. And so there have been various activities with this and the Fun Run is one that they want to repeat again. That actually will be held this weekend and so we have a quick timeframe on this. And I did talk to the organizers today and of course, same thing, we want to make sure that we are prepared for any type of emergency and the participants are kept safe. So the route of the Fun Run is something that we talked about and it would start on First Street in the area of the farmer's market and runners would run on First Street, then they would cross the North Underpass, but we're not closing the road, they'd run on the sidewalk. They would run Roundhouse, Park, Roundhouse Drive and do a loop and then run back, basically the same route back. Last year there were 18 participants and I would say we're looking at 25 to 30 this year or so. We still have some details to work out with those staff departments that oversee this, but because of the short timeframe, we would like to recommend your approval and we will be following up with additional discussion on this. We feel like there's not a road closure with this and a safe event and we've got the information that we need to proceed. So our recommendation is favorable to the event.
I'll make a motion to approve the event, First Street Market 5K Fun Run Walk.
No second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the First Street Market 5K Run Run Walk. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item E, public hearing, ordinance number 995, changes to the City of Raton Animal Ordinance Section 9, Chapter 90. This is a public hearing on the affected ordinance, number 995, it changes to the animal ordinance. At this time, we will entertain any comments from the public that are here specifically for that. I ask that you limit your time, please, and be respectful by just stepping up, stating your name and then addressing us. Thank you.
And Mayor Pro-Tam and Commission, if I could maybe preface the public hearing by just making a couple of statements. We have had public hearings for, I think, the past three meetings and so we've talked extensively about the ordinance, but just real briefly to summarize the elements of the ordinance, and we did work with the committee on the draft of the ordinance, but we recognize there is a particular problem with just the pet population. So the ordinance does require for most pet owners that there is a spay or neuter of their pet. That would be a requirement, a new requirement. It also would limit or prohibit the ability for dog owners to keep their dog on a chain, a leash, tether is not allowed, and that would require most pets that are outside to be in a fenced area. And of course, that's going to take some time for all pet owners to really adopt to that and the ordinance allows some time to move to that. But that rationale of the committee is because there are numerous inhumane chainings of pets that we've noticed and we really do not have a tool or a mechanism to cite people who are keeping pets inhumanely. And then finally, in regard to livestock, there is some changes in the animal ordinance, but in regard to livestock, I would remind people that livestock falls under the animal control ordinance and the zoning ordinance and we are not changing the zoning ordinance. And so this is actually less restrictive for livestock than probably the previous animal ordinance or the current animal ordinance, but I would remind folks and the people I've talked to, and I've got some comments on the animal ordinance or livestock portions of that, the zoning does not change. And quite simply, zoning code allows large livestock really only in an R1 district in the city limits. And the ordinance does not apply to residents outside the city limits. So we're not talking about the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance doesn't change and it would still apply to those large livestock issues.
That's all I have, Mayor Pro-Tam.
Excuse, Mayor Pro-Tam, if you don't mind, I'd just like to clarify specifically that when you say no leashing, that that does not mean, that means that in the yard you don't maintain your pet on a leash. It means you do walk your pet with a leash but not keep them in the yard on a leash.
That is correct. Good clarification.
All right.
My name is, is this thing on?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'm Ms. Duran and I am a registered breeder of Akalis for two years now. And the reason I'm speaking out today is I'm against the recommended change into city ordinance regarding the requirements for all registered breeders to pay an additional $300 per minute. I believe it's unfair to breeders who are trying to be responsible for registering their dogs, making sure we find good loving homes for them. I do believe in spaying neutering my pups and they have a contract for that. This is like, kind of like a punishment for the people that are responsible to be doing this additional cost to breed. I pay for the cost of registering each one of my dogs, I pay for the fee of the kennel license, vaccine fees, microchip, cost of vet checks. I understand there is a control breeding situation in Raton, but please consider alternating choice. Please don't make the people who are being responsible breeders pay for the price of the irresponsible, non-registered breeders. Thank you for your time and for allowing me to speak.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak again this evening. I just want to remind everybody that this is about, this is not for, this is for the people that aren't responsible for their animals, for their pets. There's a lot of people that are loving and responsible owners in this town and there's a lot that are not. I am still witnessing the same chainings. Next to me, she keeps surrendering dogs, but they're not the same dogs, so I don't even know how many dogs this person has and that's a true concern for me. The other thing I want to remind you is what I dealt with, where this dog is chained, it's not neutered or spayed or whatever, and other dogs are coming in and breeding with that dog and she's surrendering the pups and our animal officer Taft did not take the mother. That dog is chained, it keeps having puppies. He didn't take that dog, he took another dog. She surrendered a dog, but it wasn't the mother to these puppies. With this dog, it just keeps breeding. These animals are not fed every day, they're not given water, they're chained. And I see it not just on my street, on Santa Fe Drive, if anybody wants to go, on Frederick, right behind El Matador, you will see what I deal with. As a property owner, if I ever wanted to sell my place, I would never want to buy next to what's next to me. And not only that, we have a cat problem and I know that's kind of needs to be addressed later, but it's just, I don't know, it's insanity, it's just, I don't know, it's just inhumane, it's not sanitary, it's just irresponsible owners. And like I said, Raton needs to have a pet friendly town that we all can live in. And I also talked about the dog park. You know, I'm hoping that maybe we can educate these people that they could take their dog off a chain and take them to the dog park or do something besides just letting them sit there and not getting any acknowledgement, any attention. You know, I was a pet owner, I acknowledged my dog, I took my dog for a walk, I fed him, I watered him, and this is not what's happening. This ordinance is not for those people that take care of their animals. So please consider passing this ordinance. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further comment on this?
It was my support, I think.
Okay. Ms. Duran, I had a question for you. You mentioned the hobby breeder license was how much?
Well, I saw it on our, the website for this thing, it's $300. They're trying to say it's, you need a different permit now?
Well, I don't know.
I was like, well, the kennel license is only 25, and now it says there's going to be additional $300.
Well, then the ordinance that I've got, it says the annual hobby breeder license shall be $150.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it doesn't say 300, so...
See, I'm not a hobby, I'll see something.
Okay. We'll try and get some clarification on that and I don't see anything that says 300.
I know, I was like, yeah, I don't, I don't look, and I don't seem to have...
Here comes Mr. Berry now, we can maybe ask him a question.
$150 so far.
Mr. Berry, Ms. Duran stated, you know, the annual hobby breeder license would be $300 and all I've seen in the ordinance is $150. Could you address it or not?
Well, I'm not sure of the fee and I did realize that some of you probably don't have that, we printed it at previous meetings, so I asked Mike Land to bring in a copy of that and we'll do a fast review on that, so we're bringing some copies.
All right, very good.
But, I mean, the rationale is that, you know, the, as far as pet population, we really see a high number of abandoned pets related to, you know, population issues and there's just the cost of, you know, the city to provide services for animal control, operate the shelter, there are significant costs to that. So we would say that people that are involved in a commercial fashion with breeding, there will be specific requirements for them. The fees proposed, I think, are on a par with other communities and of course, Humane Society has helped us significantly with those kind of research items and we have researched many other communities, specifically New Mexico communities, and many of these provisions, including that fee, are on a par with other New Mexico communities. And it's necessary to help offset the cost of enforcing the ordinance and the measures that you have to do to operate an animal shelter, to provide animal control and the costs that go with that.
Ms. Glanzlo, I think if you recall it, the last meeting that we talked, this is an ordinance that we need to pass, but it's an ordinance that's a, it's a project, working on it constantly so that we can get the proper thing. I agree with you, there's a lot of things in our community or in our country that the good people get punished because of what the bad people are doing and we've seen it all over and it's been a long time. Our ordinance is, in fact, ordinance that is in effect right now, has a lot of stipulations that you cannot have any kind of animals, you cannot have dogs running and loose, but over the years it's been ignored and so, and it's really time that we pass an ordinance that will be beneficial to everybody. We need to punish the negligent pet owners and animal owners, we need to make sure that they have to do what everybody else does to have a pet. So I just thought I would bring that up, that the cat ordinance, when you talked about the cat, it's a work in progress, we'll be working towards taking care of all these issues. That's all I have.
Is there any other comment from the public?
I'm just curious on, my name is Ramon from Perros, on the, is this chicken thing going to be in effect and why is, why is there no roosters involved?
No, there's no roosters because roosters tend to be what neighbors oppose.
Oppose because of why?
They crow.
They make...
Because they crow?
Because they crow.
Dogs don't crow, but the bears cause the dogs to bark and that's a bigger problem in my ears because it's summertime and I have to shut my windows because I don't go out at 2:30 in the morning, I figure it's bears or it may be walkers, I don't know, but they're a bigger problem than the chickens because the chickens don't actually start crowing till sunrise when everybody should be getting up. I mean, it's, I mean, really, I mean, poor rooster.
Is there, I mean, we haven't allowed roosters in the past, is there a reason you would want a rooster now?
Well, just because they help me get up in the morning.
Oh, okay.
It's just, you know, dogs to me are a bigger nuisance and it's not that the dogs are nuisances, it's the bears are around and the dogs do their thing, you know?
The meaning behind adding, I mean, because we have not allowed chickens in the past or ducks or other fowl, and the reason for adding it in now is so that people can have small quantities in their backyards if they're able to take care of them well, that would produce eggs and help, you know, help maintain, you know, healthier diets and whatnot for our citizens. So that's why we were adding in chickens and we're trying to not make neighbors upset at each other by allowing, by having roosters. So that's the reason roosters were excluded.
All right. So roosters then. Are there roosters?
My name's Kelly Jones, I was here before. This is Riley Jones. Riley would like to tell you why she wants to keep her chickens. Because we have more than five. Tell her why you like to keep our chickens. Remember what you said you were going to say? It's okay if you're scared. So what do we do with the chicken eggs, Riley? Tell me. Are you shy scared? You don't want to talk anymore?
That's okay, I think we know what she wants to say.
She would like to keep her chickens because she, we eat the eggs, we have more than five, but we only get about four or five eggs a day, which is not enough to feed our whole family, so we have to save them up for two or three days. But if we do go a couple of days without eating, what do we do with the eggs? And if we have extra eggs? What do we do? You want to tell them why? Okay, why it's going to talk? Who do we get the eggs to? Tell them. Uncle Bobby? Can you say that? Yeah?
He's scared to death.
Yeah. He told you if he's down here, we sell the extras to our neighbors that go on their piggy bank for college and like I said last time, shh, like I said last time, I know it's pennies. But we're teaching them the skill of saving up that money. All done? And so that's why I requested last time it be up to a dozen and we don't have a dozen, but I just think that that would be better for families who have five or so people that they actually need to feed, the eggs, so.
Thank you.
And Mayor and Commission, Mayor Pro-Tam and Commission, not really, I can just give you the... give you the rationale of the committee that brings this recommendation to you. And there are a couple of things. Again, we compared to other municipal ordinance, and that's something that was seen. But some, some, this would apply to a subdivision that is very dense, say in an R5 zone, or it would apply to zones that there's greater space between houses. But this, this would apply in areas where houses are relatively close together. And so it's kind of unwieldy if we have a different number for different areas. But I think the thought was, you have to have a number, a maximum number, and it really needs to apply to some of the densest areas in town. And what I mean by that is where people live in close proximity to each other, houses in some cases are pretty close to each other, and we need to get along in those areas. So, you know, we're looking at maybe some of the possible conditions that, that would occur. And this, this would apply to not only the chickens, but rabbits, geese, ducks, small livestock. So five was the number just because we have some areas that are dense where people live closely to each other. And also that, that deals with the rooster. If we're farther apart, if we have more elbow room, it may be not such a big deal. But it can become a big deal where people are in close proximity. And I would comment here that we do have subdivisions in town that have covenants. And what covenants are, is an agreement between property owners on certain things that are not covered in our ordinance, not covered by zoning or the animal control. And so, small livestock may still be prohibited by covenants. That's not something that, an agreement that the city is a party to. So that's something outside of our ordinance that may come up with some resonance.
And I would just like to point out, under the current ordinance, there is no provision for chickens and ducks in there right now. So if you have chicks and ducks and that in your yards now, you are in violation of the law. So this is going to at least allow you the flexibility to have some. All right, again.
Hi, I'm Rose Madskin, and I want to say that I do have multiple friends who own chickens and ducks and benefit from the eggs, both by eating them themselves and selling them. And like Kelly said, it might be a little bit of money, but especially in a town that's largely rural, I know that both eating them and selling them goes a long way. And also, since our town is largely rural, it does seem like even when houses are relatively close together, they do usually still have some room. And in Colorado Springs, for example, much denser area, the limit is eight. And so having the limit be so low here does seem a little surprising, given the nature of the town and the nature of what people do to get by. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I think the thing to remember is that this is relaxing of the ordinance, not tightening it up. So I, I think, you know, I could personally be swayed to bump that number up to six or eight as opposed to five, but especially since the, they're sold in lots of six. It does seem silly to off, to go different than what they can acquire them at. So I'd be in favor of, and then maybe we could add in later, if it becomes a problem, a per square foot kind of thing, or lot size or something.
Another thing to remember, this is a living document.
Right, exactly.
So what we have before us has gone through the public hearing process. In fact, this is actually an extra public hearing, correct? And we have got to deliberate on what we have in front of us.
One more comment?
Sure, one more.
Okay. Now, being a responsible hobby breeder, and you say it's $150 for hobby breeders, how are you going to get, the other ones that say, I paid the $150, how are you going to find people out there with this one animal control person that are doing what's against the law?
That is a good question. And that's where we have to rely on the community to be reportive, you know?
Who's going to tell on any of this? Who is? Who is? They're not.
Well, that's where we've got to learn to step up and do it, be responsible, you know? We can't put all the blame on one person because that's all we can, we can do right now. But as a community, if we work together and that, we can sort out these problems, just like Commissioner Schuster has stated with the chickens, this is something that can change. If we get enough outcry and enough support for it, it's, it can certainly be brought to the commission again in a revised format.
I just wanted to add one safety with the stray, all the stray dogs. I walk, and I know there was a lady here at our previous meeting, I can't remember her name, and she expressed a same concern, idea that the stray dogs either will try to attack you or the dogs that you're walking. So that's another thing. And I believe that if we have stricter ordinance on these people with stray dogs and animals that shouldn't be running loose, and animals that aren't spayed or neutered, and we find them, it will help revenue support maybe another policy.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Okay, I will close the public hearing portion of this meeting. Item F, deliberate an act on ordinance number 995, changes to the City of Raton Animal Ordinance, Section 9, Chapter 90. Mr. Berry, would you like to preface that?
Mayor and Commissioner, we have gone through the required notification. We have really made a big effort to notify the public and, and accept their input by, as Mayor Pro Tem had pointed out, having numerous public hearings in excess of what the ordinance requires. And I think we do appreciate all of the input of citizens. And I think that we note that we're going through a transition period here. And so I think in regard to stray dogs or breeding that currently is allowed, that will not be allowed under the new ordinance if it was adopted, there are going to be citations issued to people that were probably not issued citation previously. We're, we're going to have to provide that, that enforcement portion of the ordinance with the same number of staff and people and resources that we have now. But I think that over time, we'll see more responsible pet owners or livestock owners. And that's the hope, that through this transition period, we'll, we'll come out at the end with a more responsible animal ownership. And in the meantime, it's, it's uncomfortable having these changes, and they're pretty significant changes in the ordinance. And as you say, we can come back and open the ordinance again at any time. There's a process to drafting, reviewing, and, and passing an ordinance. I think the number of small livestock that come up, and I would say that the difference between five, six, or eight is rather arbitrary. The committee brought a recommendation to you, and that certainly is not that big a deal. If that number were to change, it just may take some more work on the part of the commission. So I, I think we might talk about proceeding along with adoption and then working on that, that number if, if we want to do that. But yeah, generally, outside of the R1 zone, livestock has not been allowed to date. And so that's, that would be something that we, we would remind folks of. But, so I, I think it is a little relaxation on that. And the committee noted that there were small livestock owners, and that we seem to get along pretty well if we don't exceed whatever the right number is. And it, your guess is as good as, as anybody on the committee as to what that correct number is. So I, I think in a sustainable type of environment that we've talked about, small livestock can be a good thing, and it's new to Raton. But we do know that there are poultry owners out there and small livestock owners out there. But the ordinance may be adopted by the commission at this time, or we can, you know, make any changes to it that the commission would like to see.
I think I'll, I think it's in good enough shape. And I think, like you say, if your neighbors are hap, if you have six chickens and your neighbors are happy, nobody's going to be cited for having an extra chicken, as long as you're a responsible owner, et cetera. Just a guess, but I'm pretty sure that's the way our community will work. So I'll, I'll move to approve ordinance number 995, changes to the animal ordinance, Section 9, Chapter 90.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 995, changes to the City of Raton Animal Ordinance, Section 9, Chapter 90. Is there any further discussion with the commission? Trish, at this time, we would require a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, so.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you all for your, your input, and we look forward to, to working with you to make it even a, a better ordinance. All righty? Thank you. Item G, deliberate an act on a proposal from Engineering Analytics for engineering services for road improvements to Hospital Drive, Raton. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, you will remember that back in March, we had an application in for municipal arterial program funding through the Department of Transportation. And we were successful in being in a ward of a grant through the MAP process, and it was submitted for the reconstruction of Hospital Drive. So the funding under that grant was $150,000 from the New Mexico Department of Transportation, and the City of Raton had committed to add $50,000 to that, plus any cost overrun that may be incurred, for a total project funding of $200,000. We have received a grant agreement from NMDOT. The commission has passed that grant agreement, has been executed and sent back. I do not have a, a fully executed grant agreement back from them at this time, but I did ask Engineering Analytics, who is our on-call engineer, to prepare a service authorization for the design, engineering of the project. What we would anticipate is that we'll back into a construction timeframe that would begin approximately next June 1st. And so you see the terms of the service authorization from Engineering Analytics. Let me flip pages back here to page five. You see a, a cost estimate summary schedule, and they are proposing a fixed fee for the design and the bidding process in the amount of $16,500. We could see additional costs in materials testing and inspection during the construction phase. The $16,500 is less than our estimate that we had previously prepared and submitted to DOT. I would recommend approval of the service authorization for Engineering Analytics for the Hospital Drive road improvements. But I would recommend that contingent upon getting a fully executed grant agreement back from NMDOT, which we're waiting on.
Any questions for Mr. Berry or Ms. Sterns? You guys are easy to.
I know. It was pretty much in order.
I'd like to make a motion contingent upon receiving the full contract if we approve the Engineering Analytics Services for the Road Improvements to the Hospital Drive.
With the contingency that, I'm sorry. I can't hear tonight.
He did say that, and I'll second it.
My apologies. We have a motion and a second to accept the proposal from Engineering Analytics for engineering services for road improvements to Hospital Drive, Raton. Trish, could we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I can't, I can't hear nothing tonight. Item H, deliberate an act on tower lease agreement between City of Raton and CNC Communications of New Mexico.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, I had been contacted by Jim Mayfield. He is the president of CNC Communications of New Mexico. And for many years, decades actually, Jim has handled local radio service in the area. But of course, the world is changing, and Mr. Mayfield in his letter to the commission here has noted that it has affected his business. And CNC Communications has, for a long time, leased land that is on the old pass that is owned by the City of Raton, and that he would use. He has a tower located on that, and he would use in the, in doing his business related to radio service. So he's telling us here that he has lost some of the clients that he has had because two-way radios are being supplanted by cell phones and other types of communications. So the lease amount really exceeds what he receives in revenues for leasing the tower. So he's recommending, or he's asking the commission if we could reduce the yearly lease from $750 to $600 a year. And that more is closer to reflecting what he's seeing in the way of revenues. And I think not a big moneymaker for CNC, but that gets him, or he's not underwater on this lease. So we bring it to the commission for your consideration.
Well, Mayor, Mayor Berry, I think that, you know, he's had this lease for 10 years already, and like you said, it is falling down, and, and his income. I don't see any problem lowering it to, down to the 800, what is it, what does he want?
600.
600 a year? So I think that, you know, at this time, we wouldn't lose another potential customer here in Raton. So I would like to see it go, go ahead with this myself.
And I think what the action is, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, is that if you would authorize the staff to draft a new lease agreement with CNC Communications, and we'll reflect that lease amount in that agreement and have that prepared for the signature of the mayor.
What would the proposed length of that give of the, Mr. Berry? 10 years again?
I, I think we would, again, look at a 10-year lease at that amount. And again, it's something that we can come back and, and talk about if conditions change further. And I think that's the proposal.
So at this time, we would just be approving the reduction of the fees to $600 a month?
I think we would be approving a renewal of the lease with the new amount contained.
All right.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement between City of Raton and CC Communications of New Mexico.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to renew the lease agreement between City of Raton and CC Communications of New Mexico with the reduced rate. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote a sign of a aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Thank you. Item I, deliberate an act on recommendations from the Lodger's Tax Board. Those are in your packet. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, I was at the Municipal League Convention when the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board met on August 16th, 2017. But you do have the information contained here and recommendation from the Lodger's Tax Board. Lodger's Tax Board has recommended to the commission that $11,000 be awarded to Raton Main Street to be used to finance the third annual Gate City Music Festival out of the contingency funds. They are recommending to the commission that $5,705 awarded to the Center for Sustainability to be used for the Jack Rabbit Direct Booking Website Service. And I see that the center and And I see that the center and Raton Main Street are present to answer any questions that you might have in regard to those two items.
Are there any questions for those in the audience?
I have no questions to you. I have no questions.
I do. Is this JackRabbit, is this in conjunction with the Main Street, or is it separate? Is that, is this a separate app that we're talking about? Yeah. So primarily hotel booking?
And I think Jeff, if, would you just approach and kind of give us the summary of what this item is?
Sure. Again, Jeff Peterson, Executive Director for the Center for Sustainable Community. So you've got a little packet here that describes the, this JackRabbit Direct Booking Software. So to explain it a bit, a lot of hotels, a lot of travelers book through something like Expedia or one of those other travel sites. And the hotels pay 20%, 30% commission to those Expedias of the world, eating into their profit margins. And direct booking is, is a big trend right now as hotel, link hotel chains and then communities are pushing to get travelers to book directly with hotels as opposed to going through Expedia. So we found a product that does that service, and it's a non-commission-based direct booking software. So what you see on this first page is just to help describe what it does. This is Santa Fe Convention and Visitors Bureau, one of their, this is their homepage, this margarita screen here, and they're a customer of JackRabbit. And at the bottom there, there's a little search field that you can kind of see, it says book a room, and so there's a little search widget there where somebody can enter dates, and then up will pop this next screen, which looks like one of these hotel search engines, where then all the hotel choices and their pricing would show available in terms of what's available for those dates. And these are all live, current inventories because the JackRabbit software is talking to the software of the hotels. So what we've been discussing with the Lodger's Tax Board, the proposal is to make the contract of the JackRabbit service so that we can incorporate this hotel search feature in the new Explore Raton website, which is up in the middle. And there's a number of pages if you're really interested about what direct booking means and there's, there's a couple of interesting things about it to just highlight. One is that the, the software is going to provide us a couple of neat things. One is mobile, it will be very mobile friendly, and the trends are just pretty incredible in terms of the number of people that are hitting both Explore Raton, hitting hotel websites on their mobile device. And their, their software does that for us, both through Facebook and then through the, through the web service we'll have with Explore Raton as well. So I, I did due diligence for the Lodger's Tax Board. I looked at different packages, different pricing. I got some reviews from customers of JackRabbit to find out if they were satisfied customers and, and it's, they're just, they're really a widely competitive product. They have a very competitive product. They're based in Santa Fe, actually. They're, they're New Mexico companies who are keeping dollars in the state, which I like. So I think from a due diligence standpoint, they're competitive, the price is right from the product reviews with customers, it's a good product. Then finally, there's the, the last of the package has the pricing and the contract sort of details. The Lodger's Tax, the question that was brought up at the Lodger's Tax Board was that because they're, the board is primarily comprised of hotel owners, and the purchase of this software would be a financial benefit to the hotel owners, they did not want to vote, you know, to, to approve this. They really wanted this to be the City Commission's vote because there is somewhat of a conflict of interest. Now, I will say that not spending those, really, thousands and thousands of dollars of the hotel owners to send to Expedias of the world and keeping those dollars local is of definite benefit to the community. There's no doubt about that, that whole multiplier effect of keeping dollars local. So they were, I think they were certainly going above and beyond their duty to be, you know, clear about any conflict. So they asked that I come back to present this to the commission so that you could make that, that decision and recommendation. So, questions?
I do.
I have one question, sorry.
Go ahead.
Commissioner, but we would be committing to a three-year term?
So that's, I highlighted that in this contract, and this is a bit of a rook of meat for JackRabbit, and I have talked to them about it. So there is on this last page a highlighted section where it's a three-year term. JackRabbit's position is that the, the sort of cost of customer acquisition and building, that, that fee, basically, they put their techni- engineers to build all the guts to display the Raton hotels. So they say we need that cost to go over the three-year period. Now, there is willing, they, they may be willing to negotiate that to, let's say, a two-year agreement. The price may change slightly because of that. So the hotel folks felt like the price, given the amount they're paying for the Expedias of the world, they're, they're paying at least this amount, this $5,700 per month right now, I'll bet you, hotels combined. So in their mind, the price is right, that it's a, it's a pretty reasonable deal. The annual license is at $3,750, so that would be that $3,750 we'd, we'd have to see for the next three years come out of the budget. So the one-time setup fee, that's a one-time setup fee then done, but it's that $3,750 that's recurring for the three years. So if you'd like, I could go back to JackRabbit and try to figure out what a two-year commitment. They wouldn't go to one year, but in the end, I kind of felt like, all right, let's just, let's just do the three-year commitment. There's enough satisfied customers out there and all the due diligence stuff I did, I felt like, all right, we can, we can do this, so. Anything else?
That was, you answered my question. I, I thought the question, I said $5,700, was that, that going to be every year for the next three years?
Right.
But then, if I understood it correctly, it was $3,750.
$3,750 is the annual fee.
His annual thing for the three. And at that time, if we decide as a community, we can, we can get out of it at that time without any problems, right?
At the end of the three years, we would get out, we can end the contract.
Is there any cost out of pocket to the hotel owner themselves to be listed?
There is not. Now, that's something that I also presented to the Lodger's Tax Board, is we could try to, let's say this one-time setup. We could go around to each hotel and say, can you kick in your $150 for the setup fee?
Sure.
And then take the rest out of Lodger's Tax. So that would be an option for the commission to consider, is we could have maybe the annual license come out of the Lodger's Tax and then the setup fees be borne by each of the hotel owners individually.
There, there's not going to be a setup fee of $1,500 each year, is there?
No.
This is a one-time, if I understood it correct?
Yeah. If we create kind of a, a little bit of a process to do the whole thing with each hotel, to get it to do setup, it would be a lot cleaner and easier and we'd get this up and running faster if we did approve it all today, that's for sure.
And that was a recommendation from the Lodger's Tax.
Yeah. And then the, the way we would work this, this isn't necessarily a centers project, this is more a city of Raton, so the contract would be with the city of Raton as opposed to the center, because really, we're the sort of the acting agent to get the website up and running and help promote the website, but the website is owned by the city and this is really a city, city function, so we would work with Michael and to work on the payments and contracts being signed by the city.
All right. Any other questions?
Other questions?
And what, I do, sorry. Other websites can link to correct, like, say that other websites in the area can link to the Explore Raton for, for this service, will that...
So this is for, so this is...
Do you know what I mean?
Hotel only?
But so, yeah, so the JackRabbit will be part of the Explore Raton website?
The JackRabbit will be, yeah, it will, it will be a widget, little widget buried into the website like this screen show, yeah?
Right. And then other, other websites, say if the example, if Main Street or the Chamber had separate website, they could link to Explore Raton where then the viewer would see that widget to...
So the, the JackRabbit is strictly for the hotel in exchange of booking a hotel. Now, we are working with Brenda and we are working with the Chamber, so like we have an activities page now, an events page on the Explore Raton website where we're promoting Gate City, for example, and the other local events, and then of course, using the Google product to promote those events. So we are directing people to come to Explore Raton to find the information for Gate City, for example.
Right.
Am I answering your question?
I think I can maybe...
I think I'm not answering, asking it correctly.
Is there a widget specifically for JackRabbit that we could go and download on our phones?
No.
No.
Okay.
No, and my, I think my question is, is are we linking all local websites together? Is, are we able to do that?
Not for this.
No?
I believe what she's asking is, say, Raton Main Street puts on our page, book a room tonight, and then we can direct it straight to Explore Raton. That's what she's asking.
Exactly, that's what I'm asking.
Even though you guys...
That's what I'm asking, thank you.
We don't have that, but we can make that happen.
We could make, we could make that happen.
There's ours.
Great. Then I think it's a great idea.
Yes.
In that case, I would like to add both of the items at one for the Lodger's Tax and approve them both at this time. I make a motion to that effect.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the recommendations from the Lodger's Tax, that being $11,000 for Gate City and the $5,705 for JackRabbit. Let me take a motion and a second, then we'll have the discussion. How's that? We have the motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protem and Commission, I would just point out that Brenda Ferry has traveled down to talk about the Gate City Music Festival and it's a local event we've really been building, and I'd hate to see her go away without getting a plug in for that, so.
Come on down, Brenda. Sorry, I cut you off, Brenda.
Hi, I thought I was getting out a little easy, right? So the festival is coming along well, we have two weeks to go, and it's just getting bigger and better every year. And you'll notice that we asked for less Lodger's Tax this year in, in hopes that we come back next year for even less and make this its own sustainable event, so.
Cool.
We have some really cool new sponsors on board. Our headliners will be staying for two nights out at the Burmanho Park Ranch.
Oh, nice.
Isn't that cool?
Yes.
So we have a feeling that even bigger entertainers may be interested in coming with this relationship that we've built.
Absolutely.
We've also built a new relationship with the New Mexico National Guard. They're on board and with a sponsorship. So I, I, we have 15 sponsors now, and so it started, you know, with Pepsi, and then we've worked in McDonald's, and now people are coming to us and really want to be a part of it, so that's really exciting.
Great.
Things are going well. I don't know if you've heard quite a few of the interviews with Susie Boggs on all of the different radio stations, so that's really exciting. And she even videoed one for us, it's all over Facebook, so she's very excited to come and seems like she just wants to meet everybody, so don't be surprised if she's not out on the street.
Cool.
Meeting people on Saturday and Sunday.
Great.
Great.
Well, we had a, I had an email from, if you recall, remember the gentleman and his wife that, that when we were talking to Randy Forster that was out front, and I told you that they'd decided to come to this?
From Amarillo?
Yeah, from Amarillo, and I've gotten two emails from Amarillo people saying, when is it happening, once is it going on? They, they want to come back because they were so impressed with it.
And that's why we're keeping it at Labor Day, that way it, people remember to come here and hopefully our Lodger's Tax will just come right back in.
Awesome, awesome. Is there any further discussion? That's Mr. Berry. Mr. Berry, you have a further discussion?
Done, Mayor Protem, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, Deliberate an Act on Resolution 2017-41 of July 2017 Financial Report.
Mayor Protem and Commission, in your packet was the financial report for the month of July. I have given you an amended report because I did receive the New Mexico Finance Authority statements today, so I've updated the report to include the interest and payments for our loans and made a few other adjustments just in the accrual column, which changed our revenue and expense, just the expenses on the accrual adjustment. But everything is in balance, and so this is our first report for the new fiscal year. You'll see on the general fund summary that I've provided you that our grocery receipts received for the month of August actually is 2.8% above our budgeted GRT projections. If you look at the comparison behind that, year-to-date compared to last year, it's actually down a little over 5%. So I mean, we anticipated that, and that's why we budgeted a 3% decline this year, but as far as our projections going into the fall, I think we're in good shape and hopefully by November, we'll still be ahead of our projection going into the winter months. So other than that, we talk about this every year, our cash flow for the next five to six months, you'll start to see a decline in the general fund cash balance, and that's just because we'll be waiting for property tax, which we don't get until late December, early January. So we're pretty much operating strictly off of grocery receipts from now until probably the new year. Other than that, you know, we're just finishing up projects. We've got some road projects that are going on, and then the transfer station, and then of course, the approval with the depots. So what you might see during the year is we may have to do some of those temporary transfers, again, out of the general fund into our capital projects to cover the money until we get reimbursed from the various grants. I may be coming back to you later on with some of those adjustments. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Michael?
That's very good, thank you.
We entertain a motion to approve the July 17 Financial Report.
I'll make that motion to approve Resolution 2017-41, July 2017 Financial Report.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Resolution 2017-41, July 2017 Financial Report. Any further discussion? Michael, uh, Michael, Trish, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Segada?
Yes, thank you. Item K, Deliberate an Act on Acceptance of DFA Fiscal Year 18 Budget Approval.
Mayor Protem and Commission, you also have a, a letter that we received from the Department of Finance, and this is approval of the final budget that we submitted, and it does state in there that we are required to make that officially part of the minutes, so that's the action.
Any questions for Michael?
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 2017-42 Budget.
I mean, that's not where we're at.
Not the one.
We're on the DFA Budget Approval.
DFA Budget Approval.
Never mind that, I'll move to approve and accept the DFA FY '18 Budget Approval. That's that.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the acceptance of the DFA FY '18 Budget. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Action carries. And one more time, Item L, Act on Resolution 2017-42 Budget Adjustment Number One for Fiscal Year 18, Michael.
Well, now that the budget's approved, we're not wasting any time. We're gonna do our first budget adjustment. You will see that, and we can give you a little bit more detail on this, we have a budget adjustment for the Aquatics Center. There are some repairs, cleaning and repair...
cleaning and repairs that are gonna be done in the month of September. Now, we didn't budget any additional monies coming out of the half-cent GRT to cover, you know, any, any more than just regular maintenance. And this goes a little bit beyond that with some plaster repairs, and then, of course, the cleaning, which would require the draining of the pool. So, I don't know if Scotland's to add anything to that. Just because we approved the budget adjustment doesn't necessarily mean that we would move forward with the expense, but this would be scheduled for next month.
I would just add that the Aquatics Center now, it's hard to believe, but it's been in operation for six years, and we have seen a, a, a larger crowd this summer, more users of the facility than we've seen in past summers. So, usage is up, and these are measures that we really have not done previously in that last six years. So, the pool will be drained, not something I think that we have done. Cleaned, we did some cleaning of part of the pool above the water level, and it makes a big difference. And then we'll look at what repairs that we need to do. But, I, I think it's something with the age of the facility now that, and we're past the summertime hours on this, and we're, we're thinking that this fall would be a good time to proceed along with the block.
Question, Mr. City Manager. When you drain that pool, where's that water go? Does it go to recycle bin for the parks, or?
The water goes to the sewer plant, and we have to be fairly careful there. You have to drain it pretty slowly, and then you have to refill it slowly as well. So, it, it will go to the sewer. Now, there was a provision at the time of construction for gray water to be used for onsite irrigation, but that provision was not fully developed, and it's not in place yet, and there would be a permit required with that, and there would be additional piping required to do that. So, we're not at the point where we could do that. And, and what that would do, not only in draining the pool, but backwash water, and that means cleaning the filter, backwash water could be used for onsite irrigation. Now, when we send it to the, the wastewater treatment plant, yes, it is put into, it would go into that reuse cycle. So, it wouldn't be used at the Aquatics Center, per se, but it would be used on facilities like the golf course, football field, soccer field, lily fields, those kind of fields.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty.
So, the other item that you'll see on the budget adjustment, and this is per our DFA financial analyst's request, she went ahead and approved our budget for fiscal year eighteen. But, something that we've talked about for several years, and I have a really good analyst now, and I think DFA has some good staff in place that really monitor, when we turn in a quarterly report, they're tracking the grocery receipts, and they're making sure that they can track it within our financial reports that we submit. One of the things that causes them problems and is confusing is the one percent GRT that we issue to the Water Department every month. Now, we don't record that in our general ledger. It's pretty much an in and an out. So, we receipt the money, but then we pay it out to them out of the same line item. So, in order to remedy that, they're suggesting that our trust and agency fund, which is technically used to account for monies that don't belong to the city, that we're gonna be remitting to someone else, this would be the proper fund to receipt the monies and then issue the checks out to Water every month. And then we would have an accounting, and they could track it more easily on their end. So, that's the second part of this adjustment, and essentially, it would just account for the GRT that we issued to them every month.
Any other questions for Michael?
Not at this time.
You entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty seventeen forty-two.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty seven, twenty seventeen dash forty-two budget adjustment for number one for the fiscal year eighteen.
Second.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty seventeen dash forty-two budget adjustment number one fiscal year eighteen. Any further discussion? Trash, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes, thank you. Item M., deliberate an act on renewal of lease agreement for National Guard facility at Raton Municipal Airport between the city of Raton and DOS Aviation. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commission, I believe it was in February of twenty sixteen, we did execute a one-year lease agreement with DOS Aviation for the readiness center located at the airport. And the lease agreement stated that DOS would develop a flight school at the facility. And what I bring to you tonight is a renewal of that lease. It's been more than a year, and the lease does have provisions for a month-to-month continuation if the lease has expired. But, I think it is proper to renew the lease now. So, you see, the term of the lease would be September first of twenty seventeen to, I have a typo in there, it would be the last day of August of twenty eighteen. I'm not sure what your copy says.
I highlighted that, so I was gonna bring that up.
We would renew it effective September first twenty seventeen for a one-year period. And I would tell you that DOS Aviation has developed the flight school. It's been a fairly modest start out there. They have graduated a number of civilian students through their program, and having visited the facility yesterday, there are new students coming into the facility, and it's a valuable program, I think, for local students who may consider aviation as a career. DOS really is probably their, the best option for receiving this training. I don't know that you could really receive the quality of training that's equivalent to the training that Air Force pilots receive at another place. So, we're seeing some additional students there while the facility is, is building. So, I would recommend approval of the renewal of lease for the facility with DOS. Meanwhile, I would tell you that we are on a month-to-month term with New Mexico National Guard. That lease with New Mexico National Guard, there is no cost to that. And the Mexico National Guard has stated that they would give the building to the city of Raton with one proviso that lead contamination in the shooting range is remediated. So, the Mexico National Guard was out yesterday doing further cleaning to the shooting room. They've had numerous attempts to clean it, and then they have not passed their own standard yet. So, we were hopeful that, that will pass now. There was a crew out there for fourteen hours yesterday, performing additional service to that room. Tomorrow, the National Guard will do an industrial hygiene survey of the building, and there will be testing again of, of that room. So, we hope that that's resolved. I did attend the meeting of the State Armory Board some months ago, and their op, their, their wish was to continue on a month-to-month provision. So, we will do that.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve lease agreement for the National Guard facility at Raton Municipal Airport between the city of Raton and DOS Aviation.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the renewal of the lease agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. And finally, the city manager's report.
Mayor Protem and Commission, I'm gonna do something I normally wouldn't do, and try to be brief tonight.
Whoa!
So, I would tell the commission that I had attended the New Mexico Municipal League Annual Conference that was located, that was held in Clovis, August sixteenth and seventeenth. Commissioner Schuster and Mayor Protem Sagata also attended. The business of that conference is adoption of annual resolutions and statement of policy of the municipal league. That really is the summation of a year's worth of work in advance of the meeting of the legislature. And the municipal league will convey to the legislature various resolutions, things that they would like to see acted on by the legislature, and their statement of policies. And generally, all municipalities in the state of New Mexico are, are members and concur with these resolutions and statements of policy. A lot of work goes into those throughout the year, and that was adopted. I did attend the city manager association meeting as well. Lots of issues relating, common issues that we all have as far as administration on a municipal level. I would report to the commission that the municipal league did hold officer elections, and our mayor Protem, Neil Sagata, was nominated by Commissioner Chavez for an office, the Office of Treasurer. And Mayor Protem was elected treasurer of New Mexico Municipal League. And what I found out in some of the data that was provided to us is, really only three Raton elected officials have held office in the municipal league previously between nineteen forty-five and, the last one was really in the nineteen nineties. So, it's, it's, it hasn't happened very often. And so, Mayor Protem Sagata will start his new duties as treasurer of municipal league. Congratulations to Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
We did begin our chip seal construction project today. It went very well. What chip seal consists of is a hot polymerized high float emulsion. That is a fancy name for asphalt that we put on the streets, and then we cover that with chips. Chips are a clean three-eighths inch aggregate material, and it's a fairly simple process. So, we had good success today. We chip sealed parts of Mora Avenue, parts of South Fourth Street, part of Pickles Avenue. We'll continue tomorrow with that project, and it'll probably take off through the week. We'll, we'll chip seal a portion of Dwyer. That would be the portion north of Stevens Street, Buena Vista, Sugar Reed Avenue, and if we have quantity to do it, we'll look at Savage Avenue, which is the street here at City Hall. One last thing, Mayor Protem and Commission, I would like to ask Chief Matthews to come forward, and I would like to inform the commission that this will be Chief Matthews' last meeting. His effective retirement date, I believe, is September first, and Chief Matthews has served for twenty-one years. I would tell you this, Chief Matthews is the most meticulous, organized, and the best person I know at planning in the city of Raton, and probably one of the best that I've ever met. He has really made some significant differences in the, in the fire department as far as the operation of our ambulance service, really gained efficiency. Chief Matthews has brought in an incredible amount of grant funds to the city of Raton. He is very active. It's hard to say no to a Chief Matthews' application for funding because it is so meticulously done. You all have seen examples of, of Chief's work with the emergency plan recently and other documents, and I just wanna express my appreciation to the chief. We'll take more formal recognition at the future meeting, but I did wanna say this will be the last meeting for Chief Matthews, and just thank him for his many years of service, and especially as chief. He's been a, a very effective fire chief. And I told someone the other day, I think that he really is the most effective fire chief that I've seen in my thirty years in, in Raton. So, I wanna say thank you to Chief Matthews.
I want to thank you. Thank you all of you for giving me the honor.
I make a motion to vote no, we don't let him go.
I'll second that.
Why would you have an argument with that?
You've done a good job. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it, chief.
We've been lucky to have you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Protem. That's all he has. Is there any other comments? Commissioner Schuster?
I'm out of them.
Commissioner Jacomo?
No.
Commissioner Chavez?
I have none. Seeing none at this meeting isn't good.
Thank you all for...